Good evening. I would like to call to order the September 18th, 2019 school committee meeting at 6:31 PM. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session regarding continued discussions relative to collective bargaining agreements with employee groups and individual employees and the strategies to be followed and/or continued ongoing litigation.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. This requires a roll call vote. How do you vote, Mr. Wilson?
In favor, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Admin?
Aye.
Mr. Cutlass?
Aye.
Mrs. Demos?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene the regular school committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular school committee meeting to order on September 18th, 2019, at 7:04 PM. The September 18th, 2019 school committee meeting will be televised and recorded. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing no one, before we get to our official business, I would like to introduce and welcome our newest member, Scott Wilson. Scott Wilson was duly elected by a joint school committee in selectmen meeting several weeks ago, and we're excited to have Scott join us on the committee here. Welcome.
Thank you.
I now ask that we all please rise and ask our newest member, Mr. Wilson, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Malone for our recognitions this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight is a great night. We have some outstanding recognitions this evening. We are here tonight to recognize all of our new hires in the district this school year. Some nice, fresh, new faces here to work with our students. Those old tired faces out there are administrators who are here as well. But we'd like to thank them for being here to support this great work, and I can't thank the administrators enough for the high-quality staff members that we've brought onboard this year. We're bringing in people that are coming out of great preparation programs, and we're bringing in people who are coming from school districts that have learned solid skills that certainly will enhance our abilities here in Tewksbury. So we're very proud of that, and we really believe that these individuals are value-added to our school district. There was a time, I think, when hiring included a time of bringing people up to a level where you would be more comfortable with them serving our students, but we're hiring people that are walking in the door and just doing an outstanding job in our district. So we're very proud. I am going to read off those individuals by name and where their new assignment is, and they will be filing up here. If they follow Ms. Reagan, are you going to be directing them?
Sure.
And then we'll have a small presentation from the school committee. So with that, from central office, our new director of student and family support, Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien. If we're going to clap on everybody, we're going to be here a long time. From central office, new behavior specialist Danielle Richard. From central office, new district-wide math coach Laura Zoom. District-wide, new English second language teacher Jessica Bridle. From the Doing Elementary School, new kindergarten teacher Carly Bastieri. From the Doing Elementary School, new moderate special needs teacher Kaylee LaFlem. From the Doing Elementary School, new associate school nurse Melissa Nigro. From the Doing Elementary School, new moderate special needs teacher Lauren Spicer. From the Doing Elementary School, new adjustment counselor Sean Waldron. From the Doing Elementary School, new integrated preschool teacher Patty Anne Young. From the Heathbrook and North Street School, new STEM specialist Kristen Cahill. From the Heathbrook and North Street School, new digital literacy specialist, computer science teacher Darren Starkey. From the North Street School, new grade-three teacher Samantha Hall. From the Ryan Elementary School, new physical education teacher Steve Bedrow. From Tewksbury Memorial High School, new world language teacher Kate Clark. From Tewksbury Memorial High School, new associate school nurse Mackenzie Kanini. From Tewksbury Memorial High School, new moderate special needs teacher Tim Feeley.
Thank you.
From Tewksbury Memorial High School, new guidance counselor Kayla Shute.
Thank you.
And from both the Doing and Trahan School, new digital literacy specialist, computer science teacher Christine Mitchell.
Last one. Last one.
Should we get the principals up here as well?
Principals, would you like to join your new staff members for a picture?
Welcome.
Nice to see you again.
Moving right along, I'd like to turn the floor over to young Mr. Jack Stadman for our student representative report this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The high school has definitely been busy over the past few weeks. The Tewksbury Red Men football just won their recent game, beating Needham 32 to 6. The girls and boys cross-country met Saturday, the 14th, to face off on nearby towns. The captain said the team performed very well. The math team had their first meeting, and they are excited to solve new equations for this coming year. SAD Club is partnering with Peer Leadership this year, and their new project this year will be working with the Tewksbury Police Department to discuss substance abuse at the town hall. The Tewksbury Tribune has many new journalists this year, and articles will be coming out shortly. The yearbook committee met earlier this week to discuss new photo opportunities, and they suggest to all seniors to get their yearbook orders in early to avoid late fees. The anime club and She's the First had introductory meetings to discuss goals for the upcoming year. The science club is looking for new members to kick off the new year. Academic Decathlon met this week to discuss their new challenge for this year. The adaptive ski team is still waiting on snow to arrive. Mr. Galligan personally invites all of you to join him on the slopes when they do get snow. Student council introduced new members to energizers, that was fun, and introduced fundraiser ideas. DECA started planning for their annual fashion show that supported the Megan McCarthy Research Fund. The drama club held auditions for Alice in Wonderland. Alice in Wonderland. Congratulations to Ally Lightfield for the role of Alice. And the crew is also looking for new members. We also have the book buddies team, which will be starting their monthly visits to the Doing and Heathbrook School. And the high school is gearing up for Apple Fest, which will be coming in shortly. And last but not least, the morning update is happy to announce that they have had some successful broadcasts over the past couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you very much, Shaq, and I look forward to seeing you again this year at the Megan McCarthy Fashion Show. It's always a wonderful evening and a good time, I think, with all the students.
Of course.
Thank you very much for your report. I'd like to turn it over now to Superintendent Malone for our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I would ask Ms. Judy Nie and Mr. Darrell Price if they could come up to the podium in behalf of Alphabet. I'd like to remind the committee that we began working with Alphabet at the end of the school year last year in preparation for summer camps, replacing our previous community services summer program, then to lead into before-and-after-school programming to start this year. We had some initial bumps with the summer camp implementation, but typically had some success overall with that. We were a bit disappointed with the start of the year to the extended day program, much of it revolving around communication with parents and some lifting up that needed to be done by Alphabet as far as licensure in Massachusetts and some other pieces. I do think that because there was some communication gaps, there quickly began to develop a perception of Alphabet that I'm hoping is not the overall case. They have been working directly with me very closely for the past three to four weeks. Certainly, the leadership under Judy Nie has been significantly dedicated to addressing the issues in Tewksbury and finding means by which to make this work. We have several other staff members from Alphabet here today that are in from out-of-state to assist Alphabet in addressing some of these pieces. I do feel confident that Alphabet is going to continue to make progress on this and continue to support the needs of students and family in Tewksbury. We have a strong belief that their programming is a good match for Tewksbury. I think we're in the piece of transitioning to improved communication, improved messaging out to parents, improved accessibility to the program regularly, and I think what I've seen from Alphabet over the past three weeks is an extreme willingness to address those, develop plans, and be receptive to that. So we wanted to make sure they were here tonight to kind of talk about where they're at as a company and where we're at as a partnership with Tewksbury and what we hope to see in the future. So with that, Judy, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Thank you, school committee members, for having us and giving us a few minutes tonight. This has been, I think, to Mr. Malone's point, it's been a bit of a rocky start here. We've done a lot of communicating the last few weeks, and our team members have gotten to know your families, our families now together quite well, so we're pretty optimistic about the future. And I thank Mr. Malone for really staying on top of this. I think Darrell and I have talked with him several times a day, and he's been extremely attentive to parent concerns. As soon as he hears something, he comes straight to us, and so that really has caused us to stay very focused on making this right here. I'd like to start with just a little two-minute video for all of you who haven't had the benefit of seeing kind of what's coming down the road with our program. Two minutes long, we'll start that for you, and then we've just got a quick couple of talking points to share, really to kind of give you a progress update. Do eyes. Close that out. See that? Is that big enough? Okay, so that, I think, gave you a little bit of an overview of the kind of activities that are coming. We start the year with what we call the Wellcome Weeks, which is really getting to know students, students getting to know each other, and kind of giving them a little sneak peek into what's coming. So now we're getting to the point where we're starting into the curriculum. I also want to express a huge amount of appreciation to the building principals. I think some of them are here. They've been huge advocates for us. They've allowed us time at the open houses to speak to parents, have tables, to answer questions, get to know them. That's been a huge help as well, and of course, the parents have come out to see us as well. Last night, we held an open house at Wynn from 6:00 to 8:00. We had probably 15 to 20 families. Our entire team here was there to demonstrate some of what we call the zones, the academics, robotics, and all that are going on in our anchor spaces, and we were able to answer questions, hear feedback that in some cases was great to hear, in some cases hard to hear, but good points from families. So that was a great night. This is an overview. We have copies for you as well that we will get you, but a quick overview here. So starting with local staff, Darrell, do you want to speak to that?
So it would have been about coming in, the staff from the community services that would transition, a lot of those decided to stay with us. The faces were very familiar to the families and the school administration. So we have 34 staff. I think adding that, I think 32 are school district employees, so we only have two that have come outside of the community. We were at open houses so far. The year ended was at Doing or at Trahan, and we will go to the Wynn School, which is tomorrow. We'll have a representative there, and then they act as a coordinator. For the Alphabet staff, as you can see, where we are in 14 states. As you saw in the video, 26,000 students. This year, we picked up 52 new programs, including the Tewksbury, so we are going to be overseeing over 31,000 students. Our current enrollment's right here. As you can see, Ecore, Ryan, Doing, Heathbrook, and Doing are the two that jump out at you, and those are the two where we ended up having to wait lists some children just because of the amount of children that we had. And right now, our current waitlist up there is we have one at Heathbrook and Ryan and Doing. We have been in contact with all the parents weekly to update them on their stats. We do know that Doing has a 20% of grant program that's going to start, and we think there might be some openings there.
So this was, the waitlist issue was one that I think some of you heard about, we certainly heard about. That was new, and it was shock to parents, and it's unfortunate because we're all here to provide the service that they so badly need. One of the changes is that Alphabet is a program that is licensed by the state of Massachusetts. Licensing has very strict guidelines for who you can hire, what their background clearances are, what their credentials need to be for certain positions, and then very tight on ratios. So you literally have to have your staff hired and cleared before you can apply for a license for that site. That takes time. Admittedly, we were a little behind the eight ball. We're running the summer program here. We were a little bit behind the eight ball on that, and so when we put in the application, it came back shortly before school saying, okay, at the Doing School, you can have 52 students. And 60 registered, and maybe nine of those were a day or two before, and those parents had to be told, I'm sorry, we can't take you on day one. That was very difficult. That's something we've heard a lot about. That waitlist is currently at nine families. We are calling those families weekly to check in and see how they're doing, to see what they need for care. Are they in a holding pattern right now? Is their situation critical? Is there something else we can do? So we've been working very closely with them, and they've been very gracious and very patient at this point. To Mr. Malone's point, I think the communication has made all the difference, and we do check in with them. We also had our first successful licensing visit on Friday. Visits are unannounced. They can come tomorrow to any one of our schools. Our sites are ready for that. The licenser did come to Doing on Friday. We passed. It looked great. He was pleasantly surprised, as he told our folks who were there to greet him, and he said, at this point, you get a qualified staff person cleared, hired, you come to me, apply for additional capacity, I will open up that space. So we can move that through much more quickly now. So that was a relief to us. I think that's it on this slide. Just slide to more, just a couple of other points for you, and then we can move on. So to the point of communication, I'm going to send you to the right side of the screen. We will begin to do a monthly newsletter to parents, which will highlight the kinds of things that are going on in the program. We do that throughout the company, and we have a special section for local kinds of announcements. We highlight staff members, any parent concerns, any particular issues, like that would have been a place we would advertise the open house we had last night. And then we've been doing regular sort of email blasts through our registration portal, our registration system. Once those parents are registered with us, we can immediately send an email out to them about updates, addressing concerns, whatever that may be. So we're using those two methods to communicate with them right now. And then in addition to the 34 staff members we have hired, you saw on the last screen, and we refer to some of our folks who are in from other areas where we do programming. We know, as Mr. Malone pointed out to us initially, we need a strong local staff here. So we have now hired two individuals. One of us is here tonight, Sandy. Will you just wave? Sandy Calendrell is joining us as the regional director for this area. She comes from a nearby school system where she's been extremely successful with their extended day program, and we've known her as partners and colleagues for the last several years and are so excited she's going to be coming on in October. And with Sandy comes Richard Belmont. Richard is a Tewksbury resident. He's been working in Reading Public Schools in their extended day program, has two young children who will go to Tewksbury Schools, and he is coming onboard. He's actually already started as the Tewksbury Program Manager. So we'll have site directors at each site. They will report to Richard. Richard will report to Sandy. So he is in place, and he will be getting to go out to our sites next week, hopefully next week, visiting our sites. So a rocky start, but we think we're making progress, and have Mr. Malone and team to thanks for that, and Brenda as well. Bob and Greg.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open up for any questions from my colleagues, comments.
So, quick question. I appreciate the presentation. A quick question about the people that are still currently waitlisted at the Doing and the Heathbrook. You had mentioned that you had the, your inspection, everything's good to go, and there was a note that you made that you could have additional capacity at that school. What's limiting you now with additional capacity?
It's simply a process. It's simply a timeline process. So what happens now that we had a provisional license for 52? He made the visit, it was successful. So now he said, bring on a cleared staff person, which Cory background checks, et cetera, takes some time. But we're just about through that phase with a person, and then we contact him and say, we've got the person, and he comes out, does a look and says, because it's face and people, does a look and say, okay, now you can have, it'll probably be 13 more, right? Ratio of 1 to 13. So probably go to 65 at that point, which would take care of the waitlist. So that, a couple of weeks at most, we're hoping. He said it's usually maybe a three-to-four week process, but he understands the urgency and the issues here, and will work with us to get those open.
Okay. So, again, I appreciate that you're putting Sandy in place as the regional director, and then you've got Richard in here, you know, who's directly working with the area management. There's obviously been a lot of outcry in Facebook and, you know, calling to different members of the board and things like that. How do you plan on, do we plan on, let's fast forward to next year. How do we plan on preventing the bumpy start?
Great question.
Is it overstaffing? Because from what I understand, there's been a lot of parents that basically have just said and moved on. You know, I'm going to Wilmington, I'm going to Reading, I'm going somewhere else.
Yeah. Great question. So, you know, some of it is new startup, right? Some of it is new startup and moving from a locally operated program to a licensed program. We knew that was going to happen. We've opened many places over the years, nine districts in Massachusetts in the last six years. There's always going to be some new startup. Here, we were running the summer camp program, which we typically don't start with. We typically will get an award in the spring, and we'll start up in August for the New Year. We started up with a summer camp program. We admittedly got a late start on the school year. That will not happen next year because we will have the staff in place, we'll have the leadership in place. We did not have strong leadership. We actually lost our regional director partway through all of this, who was handling licensing, et cetera. And we know, as you've heard, this can't happen again here. So we'll be ready next year, and I think we're going to have to, you know, we'll open up registration in the spring, so we'll know how many families. So those families who maybe have given up might give us another chance, we hope, seeing that things are on track and going. We'll open up registration in the spring and have some idea how many are coming to us, and we'll have that time to staff for the first day of school.
Have you, beyond this, what other ways are you publicizing that you're doing this? I know that, you know, obviously, this is a great outlet. I mean, there's obviously a limited amount of people here. You know, we're rebroadcast and, you know, limited amount of information. How much more are you going to go? I mean, because it seems like the steps are there. I mean, you guys are, you know, you're hiring, you're doing all the right things.
But getting the message out.
Right, and that's the thing.
Yeah. And we can get it out to those who are registered in our system like that. It's the rest of the community.
Right, and I'd want to promote that for you. I mean, and we can only do so much as far as the school committee goes, and, you know, and Chris and Brenda and just, you know, say, hey, look, it looks like they've got it under control. They've got a regional person, they've got a town person. You know, they're going at, you know, eight cylinders plus. You know, what else are you?
A little bit of a PR, more to the public, I think, is probably the next step.
Right. Are you promoting on Facebook? I mean, is?
Yeah, I mean, I think things, I think have started to settle down on Facebook a little bit, and so it might be a good time for us to jump in and show some of the good things.
Yeah, now that, you know, when Richard jumps on in the next week or two.
Absolutely. And introduce him on Facebook, et cetera. So, yes.
I guess I appreciate you guys come out here and, you know, saying that, you know, we had a bumpy road, and so it sounds like you guys are on track, and we wish you guys the best of luck.
Thank you. We appreciate all the support. Well, then, very patient. We know it hasn't been easy for you, for sure. It was not our intention, but we'll give it a turnaround.
I just wanted to know, how's it going with the programming with the students and the programs you have going at the different schools?
That's a good question. We, you know, again, candidly, admittedly, there's a little bit of both. We've had some parents saying, wow, this is structure. This is different than what they're used to, and you've seen some of the activities, and some of that require some structure. So, you know, we shared with parents last night, look, no one's going to be forced to do anything, no child's going to be forced to do anything they don't want to do, but we really never have kids opt out of it once they really get involved and try and have fun. So, but the flip side is, we actually So, but the flip side is, we actually had kids literally crying, am I right, Jennifer? Crying when the parents come to pick them up. They haven't wanted to leave yet. They're in the middle of something that's really fun and engaging. And we certainly have had parents come up to us and say, look, what we're seeing so far is great. We're really happy with this. The summer program, we got good feedback on, that the content was much more than they had expected. So I think as we continue to unroll that, we're going to hear more positives that way. The content itself, the curriculum is fun and engaging.
With us too, just, we're in week three, so we're getting all the systems down now. You know, the homework time, the snack, the reset. Those things are all required, which is fine anyway, from the state licensing. We have to have a certain amount of homework time, we have to have a certain, we have to provide snack, we have to have some fitness time available. How much time is left over for our program? And that's the things we're still working out with the team and the staff, finding that right balance, because we know homework's very important. How much time is left for our zone times? And we're still working that out, and it's coming along. So it's not there yet, but obviously the children are safe, we're taking care of them. The curriculum's slowly being implemented, and we'll see more and more in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Thank you.
Just one, just to clarify, was it only one staff person you needed, and that would solve the waitlist problem?
You know, technically, yes, for this, since there's only nine at doing. Now, you know, there may be others who have said, I'm not even going to bother, because I hear there's a waitlist and I can't get in there. But technically, yes, one more will take the nine off of doing. We've got one family at Heathbrook, you know.
So we hired the staff about three weeks ago, and we're just waiting for them to be cleared. We cannot start about the FBI background check, the state background check, the query there. So to this gentleman's point, like, what is the whole of? It's, we aren't like checking the mail every day, make sure they're cleared, so we can get them in and start and get these eight or nine over. As soon as we get the cleared staff, that's when the license guy can come back and go to Terry School and say, okay, you have additional space in the library, cafeteria, the gym, the classroom. That's what he, that gentleman will do, and he'll say, we'll give you, instead of allowing 60 kids in your program, we'll now allow 75 kids in your program, or 90.
And the families are aware of that, and they're patient?
They are, yes. And we didn't say this, for those families that are on the waitlist, because we knew it was such an inconvenience to the families, we actually have reached out to those families, and if they're occurring a childcare fee at another facility, we would help compensate them in some of those ways as well, just to, for the inconvenience. Because this is not what we're used to as well.
Sorry.
That was, they thought.
In addition, we are still hiring beyond that, because, you know, we've got a workforce here that's saying, you know, I want to work, you know, one morning and two afternoons, or one afternoon, and we're kind of stretching them right now. So we are hiring additional staff, just to this point, or way about getting it.
And I think that's a piece we've been working on a little bit together. There's the initial piece of getting up and going, and I think a little bit more to Mr. Sedman's issue is that we've got to have capacity. That if two more kids sign up on Wednesday, we can readily handle that without waiting three weeks for a background check. And that's, things we've talked about is setting that up. And the capacity to be a little bit flexible with upcoming days of no school, upcoming vacation weeks. Plan for those now, prepare for those now, get those pieces together now. Use the data that we have from community services to have an expectation of how many students, you know, we would look at. We talked a little bit about programming. From the summer perspective, we were at the same level as community services, if not up, as far as student usage. Even despite the waitlist, we're, again, even with community services, are up with student and family usage. We want to handle everybody in this program. So part of this is that learning piece to solve the waitlist problem, but we want to solve it at the same time where we're solving any waitlist problem in the future. So that's pieces we're trying to navigate right now. And I think through their alphabet commitment to a new mid-level management group coming in, we'll be able to project those out and have answers ahead of that time, rather than waiting to hit a cap of students at a given school and have to react. We don't want to go down that road again.
So with the new, since the licensing department came in last week, did they give you a number now that the doing is capped at?
Not yet, not until that, the doing, I don't think we're going to have any problem getting 20, 25 more children cleared for that, because of the space of that school and cafeteria. But until we have a cleared staff member, which is any day now, trust me, we are just waiting for that.
Then he'll come back and say, you've got the staff, I've seen the space, okay, you can check that box.
They will not increase the capacity without having a clear member.
Right, no, I understand that. I wasn't sure if there was a specific number that you were looking at in order to.
No, ultimately, there will be, based on space primarily. You know, they'll say, this facility with the space you've been provided can handle X number of children. It's basically a 1 to 13 ratio acquired by the state. And so for every staff member you add, you can add another 13, providing you have the space, not that it's pre-13 children, it's less.
It's less than that, definitely. Now, I was a site director for community services for 10 years. So I've walked the shoes, I've lived the life, I get it. And space is, you know, it's a crunch sometimes, you know, and you have the different activities that are happening in the elementary buildings, through the enrichment and through all the other things that you have to kind of compete with. I just don't want to see us being reactive all the time. I want to make sure that we're being proactive, and I want us to be cognizant of the fact that just because there's only one member waiting at the Heathbrook, I want to make sure that there is a plan in place to now go and, you know, schedule that for the next time. I don't want us to just be reactive. I want to make sure that we're being proactive. Are we still using high school students as far as help in the after-school program? Or is your staff only?
We've been talking about that, because again, there's a licensing issue around that, and how many and what they're able to do when you come under.
Right, right.
We see the licensing division. But we know what a successful LIT, the Leaders in Training Program, was. Yeah, we've had several conversations about that, looking for how we could layer them in some way. But initially, we couldn't use them the way they had been utilized in the past.
I think that that's a loss. I think that if you needed some help with that, I'd be willing to sit down and talk to you. I think it benefits everybody, from the student volunteer to the students that are attending. I would like to see you sort of look into that a little bit more.
Heard last night a parent that their child is missing the older kids.
It's role models, right? It's a great experience for both the student that's attending and the student that's volunteering. So I'd like to look into that a little bit for me. I also am curious to know, maybe you could share it with us, what a typical day looks like for those kiddos. You know, I'm receiving some parent calls that are concerned that the student didn't get to go to outside because it wasn't a second staff member, and they were told they had to stay inside, and that's not what they had signed up for. They signed up so that they'd get their homework done, they'd have a snack, they'd get some energy out, get picked up. That's important. You know, these kiddos have sat for six hours, we really kind of need to burn some energy. So I just want to hear from you, that, you know, that this will be a priority, that we will be scheduling staff accordingly, so that we can have somebody at the pickup place, but then also somebody that can be supervising the students, excuse me, in a different area? Or maybe we arrange so that the pickup is where they're having their gym time or their recess?
Exactly. And that's a couple of conversations we've had with Mr. Malone, is about spaces that maybe were used in the past and aren't this year for some reason, and so we need to have a run at the door. Because it used to be, parents could come in to a particular door, there'd be a staff member there with students. They could kind of do both, but it's not possible now. So we're working on that.
Okay.
Jennifer, do you, or anybody, do you want to talk about a typical day? Or?
Yeah, I can actually address there. And that was part of the communication where I think we put it on a better job. With us being licensed, and I don't want to keep using that as a crutch, because it's not. The staff were getting used to what that meant. And that didn't mean the children couldn't go outside. And that was where I think we did a good enough job with our staff, saying that, yes, because it's a 1 to 13 ratio, and there's two or three staff, that doesn't mean the other two staff members can't go out with the children. Didn't mean one, you can only take 13 children out with one staff member, and the other staff have to stay in. We kind of worked that through with having our staff trainings last week. Heathbrook, where we were struggling to go outside, we looked for records of that. And we haven't received anything along those lines here in the last few days or the last week regarding that. At the open house last night, after we had the parents, you know, one of the questions when they were talking to us, I was like, have you seen, you know, a better communication? Have you seen the better alphabet? Have you seen anything that you could change in the last week that we have done better? And it was all based on what Mr. Malone and you guys were hearing previously. You know, I know we've turned the corner on that question that you've asked. I know we've turned the corner on this waitlist that we're working on, that's going to be disappearing very, very soon, the space and all that. So typical days, when they come in in the afternoon, just answer the question, we'll check in it, because obviously in the morning, the parents bring their children in, we don't have to worry about checking in. So we check in all the children. The three things that we'll do for our students, the homework, a snack, and a recess, fitness activity. Those three items, we kind of rotate them depending on how many children we have. So those three are the top priority that we do. Then we will go into our zone and curriculum time for maybe a half an hour, 45 minutes, where we do our fitness one day, we do our STEM on a, you know, a second day, and we do a maker, we do our part. So depending on the day, there's a schedule. So parents and the children will know on Tuesday is the technology day. You would know that as a school board member, Mr. Malone and Brenda would know that as administration piece, that they walk in, that they say on Tuesday, this is what each school should be doing. Wednesday could be the culture day, Friday is always a maker day. So that is trying, we're working on that balance now. That's kind of what a typical day is. Parents are picking up along that time, so that's the challenge, where we've got to have somebody available to check out, get the children while we're still having a seamless activity going on. And that's kind of what we're working on now.
And then the last wrap-up of the day for those, as children are leaving, you know, it starts 5 o'clock or so, 5:30, it starts to thin down, is sort of a looser pre-year choice club. Probably, it isn't quite as structured as the curriculum. So, yeah, there'll be indoor, there'll be outdoor, there'll be rotating through these zone activities.
Okay. And just one last question. I noticed when reading a little bit through your information, there was the punch cards for the early release days. Have we accounted for those kiddos that have already signed up for the early release days in these waitlists?
Yes.
Okay.
And I think there's three on there, and actually we took one off last night, so that's actually updated the two.
So we don't need to add any more to what I'm looking at here? Okay. Thank you.
Right. Obviously, I think, being the benefit of the chair, I've had a little more experience with Chris and yourself. I just want to say thanks for coming in and explaining, and thank you for doing the community meetings. As someone that's an elected official, I tell you, I can't appreciate enough your candor and your honesty. So many times, things don't go as planned, right? And this is one of those instances. And, you know, I know I'm happy, you know, although of the shortcomings we've had, I've been very impressed with your responsiveness, your ability to come up here, your ability to do the best that you can. I think we originally believed in the program, the programming, because it was a little bit more structured. Yeah, I don't want to say it was kind of the Wild, Wild West with community service, but we didn't, you know, it was, you know, there wasn't a lot of continuity going on there dearly. So, you know, I don't want to be the dead wuss about the slow start, but it's the responsiveness to me, that you guys have been up here, that you've been working with us, that you've been working with the community, that you're not afraid to face the fire like we have been for weeks, you know? I'm thrilled to hear that the waiting list is going down every day. I know, you know, knock on wood, hopefully that person that you get for unemployment gets cleared sooner than later, we can get everyone in. And, you know, hopefully by the end of the year, maybe we can put something together and have you back in here and show you all the great things that go on in Alphabet, because I truly believe that the way that you've reacted to this situation, I think we partnered with a good partner that's eventually, in the long term, I think, going to be very good for our children here, so.
Thank you.
That's all.
Makes a lot. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to citizens forum. Is there anyone present here tonight that would like to comment on anything that's on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one rising, I'm going to move it over to our clerk, Mrs. Demos, for the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 14th, 2019, this school committee workshop.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the August 14th workshop meetings. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The aye vote, the chair votes aye as well.
And I'll abstain from voting, just because I wasn't present.
For the record, Mr. Wilson is abstaining, because he was not present. Moving on to item number two of the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 14th, 2019, our regular school committee meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 14th. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain as well.
One abstention with Mr. Wilson, who was not present. I'd also like to ask the clerk to move the payroll.
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 8/22/2019 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown in the total amount of $1,070,608.62.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the payroll ending August 22nd, 2019, please signify by standing aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Mr. Wilson, I'm assuming that you're going to abstain?
I can, oh, I should abstain. I wasn't even on the board at that point.
Mr. Chair, I move the school department payroll for the period ending September 5th, 2019, to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown, for a total amount of $1,316,990.35.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll, period ending September 5th, 2019. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, with, once again, Mr. Wilson abstaining, as he was not present.
Correct.
Thank you. I'd like to move along to agenda item. To Mr. Malone for a superintendent and staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'd like to join the committee and everyone else in welcoming Mr. Wilson to the school committee. Certainly, we're very excited about that. First, met Mr. Wilson as a parent, proud parent, and then a very supportive FinCon member to a lot of the school budget items that we worked through the town, so it's certainly fantastic to have him on board. Just want to update the committee just a bit. If we go back to the retreat we did this summer, in a review of some of our capital plan items, we've been working closely with the town manager for the upcoming warrant articles for town meeting. And Mr. Montori has worked with us to develop a plan to actually look at many of those items, to get some plans developed and get some pricing on that. So with that, there'll be a warrant at town meeting for a total of $300,000 to look at improvements at the Heathbrook, predominantly the Heathbrook and the doing school. Among those major items that we would like to have looked at, so we can get further pricing, so we can more articulate a long-term plan, is window replacement at the Heathbrook School. We had door replacement done at the Heathbrook in the doing this past year. We'd like to completely look at that process as well. In addition, we'd like to look at the pricing around an electrical upgrade at the Heathbrook School. Again, we just finished an electrical upgrade at the doing, so we'd like to replicate that at the Heathbrook as well. We'd also like to get some architectural ideas on some of the greenhouse classrooms at the Heathbrook School, to see what type of ideas we might be able to look at to improve the conditions of those classrooms at the Heathbrook School, to see if that's financially feasible to take on a project of that matter, to kind of rule that in or rule that out. feasible to take on a project of that matter, to kind of rule that in or rule that out. We'd also like to examine any other cooling options at both the Heathbrook and the Doing. What is available out there in the most recent technology? What we would look at for as a scope of a project? And is that something we would then include pricing-wise in our long-term plan to kind of rule that in or rule that out? We'd also like to look at the condition of the stone retaining walls in the rear of the Doing School. We have some erosion going on back there that we're a little bit concerned about. That would be a big project, so we'd like someone to come in and give us an idea of the scope of the work that would be required and get some idea of pricing, so we can see where that fits on our long-term plan. And also, we're entering the end of the lifespan of the roof at the Doing Elementary School. We'd like a closer look at that piece and see if that's a piece that not only we would want to expedite on our long-term plan, but also entertain a roof repair project in combination with the MSBA possibly. So I think the big idea here is to take some of those bigger items and bring them down into a realistic picture, that then we can actually target funds through the budget and prioritize what specific ones we would want to look at, and maybe if there are other ones that maybe through this study be more prohibitive, maybe remove them or save them for a later date. So we're hoping that that piece through that warrant article will put us in a bigger position if we go into this new school project, to have a stronger long-term plan for the Doing and the Heathbrook moving forward. In addition, just an update, we did have some sewer ejection pumps replaced at the Heathbrook School that failed on one side of the school. They were original pumps to the Heathbrook. When we researched those pieces, as happens with older buildings, it was determined that those pumps were solely made in Germany, and would take three to four months to require hats off to Mr. Marshon, who worked with a local contractor and a pump organization that actually fabricated some pieces, they got those replaced within a week. So we have new pumps working in there, but those are some of those ongoing repair pieces that we do have to be able to react to. We also have the new boiler system being put in place at the Heathbrook School right now. I took a look at that project yesterday. They are certainly on a timeline to ensure that we are ready for the heating season. If you ever want to see a clean project, go look at the project at the Heathbrook. You wouldn't know that that level of work is actually going on. So we just hope to get that boiler in place and operational certainly by our, start of our heating season. Hats off to Mr. Montori and the town who worked with us to secure funding through a grant to get a standalone new hot water boiler at the Doing School at a grant cost of $83,873. That was brought to us in connection with the town. We jumped on it immediately. There was another project going in conjunction with the town, but just great opportunities and great partnership with the town bringing that to our attention. We continue to work on the security upgrades, the new security camera system and control, not only the cameras, but the new control system that will control all the cameras in the district is in place at the Wynn Middle School. Fantastic operation. It was a big uplift, and as we move on to the other schools to upgrade their security camera systems, those will all integrate with out of that Wynn Control Center. So we're very excited about that. Call went out Monday night notifying the school community that we will have another round of mosquito spraying done on Thursday evening. Again, terrific work with Susan Sawyer from the town and Mr. Montori in conjunction with the Center for the Massachusetts, Central Massachusetts Mosquito Management Project. Very easy company to work with. We're likely one of the few towns in Massachusetts who's going through a second round of preventive spraying. We had good results on the first spraying, and they're very conducive around working around our schedule. We have a open house for parents at the Wynn School that evening, and they immediately altered that spraying to ensure that they would, that would be done after that was over. So great organization to work with and very supportive, again, from the town, helping us work with that. The Ms. Garrish is here as well. The 21st Century Grant is up and running at the Doing School. It was mentioned by Alphabet, but once again, this is a grant that's bringing in $175,000 to specific, specifically the Doing School to support after-school programming for students. They're still finalizing the setup and the hiring, the start times, but it will be servicing at least 60 students at the Doing School. It was a great success last year. It's a three-year grant, so we know we'll be going into it next year, but hats off to Ms. Garrish and her team for implementing that and getting that going as well. Was able to participate last week at the chiefs and superintendents breakfast hosted by District Attorney Marion Ryan and Lowell last week. Was joined by Chief Sheehan and Chief Hazel and some of our state representatives, and had a great breakfast and had some suicide prevention training that was outstanding, but it just gave us an opportunity as town officials to kind of be together and talk about some of those elements that we're all working on as far as students go, and also join the Tewksbury Police Department in a preventing child sex abuse training on August 15th, which we were certified in on behalf of the town. So it was a great opportunity to work with the police again on that. Just in preparation, and I know Mr. Pelletier had talked about this at the retreat this summer, but Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will be conducting their tiered focused monitoring this year for Tewksbury. This was the previous coordinated program review. So they'll be looking specifically at civil rights policies, special education, English language learner services, Title 1A, Title 2A, and Title 4A elements. This is, they have made some revamping to this. This was traditionally was a coordinated program review, more of an inspection with a list of deficiencies that need to be. This is more of a collaborative, set up a plan to move forward after they come in, more of an informational piece. But we have to provide them a lot of information. There's ever-changing regulations as far as civil rights, special education, English language learner laws. They want to make sure we're most up to date. Typically, it requires us to update some of our policies, handbooks, all those pieces. They'll look at some of our records, they'll talk to staff members, they'll visit schools. They'll be here in early February to do an onsite inspection, but it is really a multi-month process. And we have several administrators that will be involved in that, so we'll be reporting out on that once we get those results. But it is a big element that we will go through. The Tewksbury app is up and working, so download that Tewksbury app on your phone. Some of the feedback we've gotten has been pretty positive. We've tweaked a few other things that we're still trying to improve, but we hope that increases our access with parents and makes it easier for parents to communicate with the school. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Reagan.
Thank you, Superintendent Malone. Welcome, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Nice to have you at the table. I'm going to warn you, in this thing we call education, it is laden with jargon and acronyms, so at any time, feel free to ask, what does that mean when you say NGM CAS or any of those things, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
Happy to help. But Superintendent Malone, from your update, I'd like to just point out that Ms. Garrish is still here. In the breakfast that you went with, the chiefs and the state representatives touted the suicide prevention program, QPR. Our district trainer for the QPR program is certified and trained, and it is Mrs. Garrish. So she's right here, and we thank her. The state has a mandate that we train our staff every, within every three years in the suicide prevention cycle, and again, Ms. Garrish has promised to do that for the staff of Tewksbury. So the first item in my actual update is in your consent agenda, and it begins with the 2019-2020 MCAS testing schedule. I present you with the schedule every year that the state presents us with. You can see they list retest dates, but then they list those long windows of testing for each grade level and for each of the subject areas. You may remember, both Mr. Stabman and Mr. Wilson and members of the school committee, we work with the principals and the IT team to develop a Tewksbury special schedule. So we really drill down to specific dates at each grade level, at each school, and particularly with a goal of providing all of the IT and staff support to our teachers when they administer the test, as well as parents with sufficient warning as to when those exact days are for their child in that grade level. So more to come on this. I expect to have the specific Tewksbury date posted by early November, and you'll see that at that related meeting or perhaps even sooner. Next, you will see the 2019 Assessment and Accountability Reporting Schedule. The dates aren't listed here, but I'm going to give you some specific dates to pay attention to. If you look at the mid-September block, the last bold official embargoed accountability data piece, that is coming out tomorrow. So embargoed means we can't share them, but the official embargoed accountability data will be accessible by school principals in the district tomorrow. Late September, that next block, on September 24th, so just in a few days turnaround, official district and school level MCAS and MCAS alt results will be released to the public. The last bold entry in that late September block says printed MCAS parent and guardian reports are scheduled to be delivered to the district on September 30th. And then it takes us a couple of days to organize them, get them out to the schools, and get them home. So again, some key dates would be tomorrow, the 19th. We'll see our official accountability data the 24th, Tuesday, the 24th. Official district and school level data will be presented to the public, and on the 30th, will be delivered the parent printed reports that we will get together to get home within that next week. Today, we participated in the new NGM CAS accountability reporting presentation from the Department of Education. I plan to apprise you of, if you remember last year, I presented you with a summary of this new accountability system and what it would mean with the district and school level ratings. I will present you with that again at our October meeting and help to inform you as far as what that accountability data means that's out there. We're also planning a parent and community presentation and information session for question and answers. They're not highly attended, I have to say, and perhaps that means because people understand the reports they're getting, or maybe they're asking those necessary questions to the teacher and the principal, and they don't need to come to a district level presentation. So we also plan to record some voice-overs with the presentation we'll give to you and put it on our website, so people can access it at their own free will. And we will communicate those presentations and dates, obviously, through our website via email and one call now. Monday, our principals and district administrative team engaged in a full-day training, again, with the goal of improving their supervisory feedback and evaluative process and calibrate that process throughout all of our schools. It was very well received. We've used Rebus Associates a few times now with our administrators, and the training was done very well. And then finally, some reminders for dates for people that may be watching and for the committee. First, October 7th, 2019, is our townwide PAC meeting at 6 o'clock at the Wynn Middle School. All parents welcome to come, as they're all members of their related school PACs that can join their PAC leaders for the presentation and information from each of the PACs.
Sorry, Brenda, what is that date again?
October 7th.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Friday, October 11th, is a professional development day. There is no school for our students and a full day of professional development for our staff. Monday, October 14th, is Columbus Day. There is no school for both staff and students. And then finally, October 26th, is our annual Applefest Craft Fair from 9 to 3 o'clock PM at, right here, at Tewksbury Memorial High School. Proceeds from the Applefest Craft Fair are benefit the students and clubs, especially the activity of all-night-long graduation here for students at the high school. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening.
And I'd also like to welcome Mr. Wilson to the board. Great to see, great to have you here. I have a couple of quick updates. First, on our transportation system, kind of something we do every year, update the committee on transportation. So Ms. Irwin, our new assistant business manager, took over transportation. This is her first year as startup, so she's on the learning curve and how to coordinate these changes and tweaks we're making to bus routes with the schools and the parents and students. It's quite an undertaking at the beginning of the year. I told her, this is kind of your Super Bowl, this is get off the ground and get it up and running. So she's doing a good job getting her feet wet in that area. We've had no reports this year of overcrowding on any of our buses, which is the first year that I've ever been able to say that. Every year, we usually have one or two that end up with too many students onboard, and we'd have to make some shuffles, but not the case this year. We're dealing with a few timing issues in our afternoon in our second and third-tier schools. We're working with the bus company, drivers, and principals to come up with some solutions to those issues, so we can get our students on the road and headed home as fast as we can at each of those schools. We just move kind of cautiously on those changes. We want to make sure, we're looking at everything and make sure they're going to work before we implement. So we do a little bit of research, following buses, looking at GPS and times and things like that before we actually pull the trigger on those changes. So I met with the bus company today. We have a couple of ideas we're going to research over the next few days and hopefully implement next week to help our drivers get to those next schools in a timely fashion. Our in-district and out-of-district vans seem to be operating well. We had a few minor hiccups at the beginning of the year, mostly communication issues, things like that, that we reacted to and ironed out as soon as, as soon as we were, those issues were brought to our attention. And just like to thank our transportation companies and partners, Tewksbury Transit. The drivers and the office staff there are doing a great job for us, as always. Really tough job driving those big yellow school buses with a lot of activity going on behind you and staying focused on the road and managing the students at the same time. It's a lot, and we have a good group of drivers that are doing a great job with that. And our out-of-district companies, Trombly Motor Coach and Pride Star, have been real quiet for us on those fronts, and that's usually good news that they're handling their business the way it should be. So that's it for transportation now, unless you guys have any questions?
Yes.
Quick question. Have we ever looked at in the past, the only reason about alerting parents or students that their bus is either running late or had a mechanical issue?
We have looked at a couple of software applications that tie into GPS. Like, there's a few products out there, Where's My Bus, things like that. We tested actually one last year on the 21st century, with the 21st Century Grant buses, and it didn't work so well. But we will continue to look into that.
Internally, I think we have decent communication with Tewksbury Trans, because their drivers have the radio contact back to the dispatch that has immediate contact back to Mr. Libby. So when that, that piece occurs, we can get to parents fairly quick, whether that's notifying, searching and notifying an entire busload of students by parent and going through Aspen and sending out, you know, it's broken down, we're sending it on the bus, there'll be a delay. When we get into some of the specialized transportation with some of the other individual companies, their runs are much longer, and sometimes they change, and they go into multiple towns. So it's, it is a little bit of a offload working with those companies to make sure. Sometimes they're pretty good at notifying the parents, but they don't notify us.
Right.
And sometimes they're not good at notifying the parents. So we, that is a continued piece that we do have to work with, and typically to start out the year, if they're going to multiple, vans going to multiple school locations over several miles of town, it does take them a couple of weeks to figure out their route, and they make changes, and that creates uproar as well. So we'll continue to work with some of those companies to work on their communication, but we do have a little bit more control over what goes on with Tewksbury Trans and a pretty regular communication piece with that.
It's just funny, because, you know, given the technology that the kids have these days, and knowing, you know, it's the high school and the Wynn have such a tight window, you know? I just happen to have that, you know, there was that minor glitch first week of school, and my kid... school, and my kid happened to come across, and was like, oh, wow, your bus is going to be late. It was just, I didn't know if we had looked into the past, but, so.
Yeah, we have and will continue to.
Yeah, no, it's just, like I said, it's interesting with, with everything between the text messages and Instagram, and there's that and the next thing.
It's that. There's a product that was developed by some Reading High School students that's gaining a lot of traction out there. We heard about it at a couple of our business manager meetings. They're, you know, they're the best at developing those apps and rolling them out, and it's something that kids are doing themselves now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second update for the committee is on sort of our fees and revolving accounts, just a refresher, sort of, if you will, on what the rules are for our revolving accounts and our grant accounts. We manage, well, last year, we managed, we had, we had 87 active separate funds. Any monies we collect for any given purpose have to be kept in a separate fund, including our general fund, so that's just one of our, it's our biggest fund, obviously, it's our budget. But we have, we had last year 87 separate funds that we managed, and those are things like grants, user fees, other fees, programs we may charge tuition for. We have gift accounts that we have to manage separately, insurance accounts, if we have an insurance claim, that that money that we get from the insurance company has to go into a separate fund and be spent for that purpose. So, and the expenses that we, when we spend that money, has to be on an expense related to that program. We're not allowed to take football gate receipts and go buy textbooks. Those are, we, we have to spend the money on things that's, that are related to the program or the purpose of the, of the fee. So for instance, like parking fees here at the high school, we spend some of that money on half of our, one of our security staff that works here at the high school, half of his salary comes out of those parking fees. We make repairs and upgrades to the parking lot. We created some spaces down at Strongfield a few years ago to increase our parking capacity here. We use parking fee money for that type of thing. Snow removal, extra snow removal is necessary here because of the way the islands are on the property. If we have a large amount of snow, there's just no place to put it, it needs to be moved to a separate spot. So we're contracting for some additional snow removal using that money. We're also looking into camera improvements for our parking lot, parking lot here at the high school, where we have some dead spots now in our, in our security cameras. So that's the kind of thing we use our parking fees for. Athletic fees, we use mainly for busing, our athletes to away contests throughout the school year. That's probably 95% of the, where the athletic fees go. Occasionally, we use that to fund a coach or a person that we might need if a particular program has an unexpected rise in popularity, and we need another adult to manage the students. We might fund a coaching position with, with that money as well. But that was it, just a quick update, kind of refresher for the committee, be able to answer questions if you get those going forward on our fees. And the last thing I would like to do is to thank our maintenance staff and John Marchand in particular, the amount of work they got done this summer was incredible. I don't know if John slept any nights this summer. He was, he takes his job very seriously, did a fantastic job getting multiple projects completed, and schools ready to go at the beginning of the year for us. So thanks to those guys. And that was it for me.
Great, thank you, Mr. Libby.
Moving on to the consent agenda, does anyone have any questions regarding the consent Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second to accept tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye as well?
Abstain.
Okay, with one abstention from Mr. Cutlass. Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports, I'm going to start with Mr. Cutlass and the elementary school building committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving along pretty good with that, the architect, project manager, doing the design along with the contractor and the administration. I believe we're 60% done with the design, and they submitted it to the MSBA. They're, they oversee it to make sure everything's the way they want it, since they fund a substantial portion of the school. And I believe the administration's happy with it so far, and it can always be adjusted and changed, because we're only 60% done. So, but things are moving along nicely, I think. We meet every couple of weeks now to go over it. The athletic subcommittee is meeting on a regular basis as well to put in place the field and the fieldhouse, so I think everything looks good with that so far.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cutlass, I'll go to Mrs. Demos for the Tewksbury Education Foundation.
The Tewksbury Education Foundation is still getting organized for the school year, so there's nothing to report at this time.
Okay. And I'm going to give an update on the Tewksbury CPAC. The CPAC normally meets on the third Thursday. They met tonight due to open house conflicts. So some of us stopped by there to say hi before they perform their work. They want to announce that they're hosting a basic rights workshop on October 17th from 7:00 PM, I believe, till 9:00. And they're also running a social event at the Blue Wave Facility right down the street in Tewksbury on November 4th. I will have more information on that event at our next meeting. And Mr. Stadman, do we have a wellness advisory committee update tonight?
We do. We met on Monday with our new chairperson, Kelly Constantino. We touched base on some of our goals and objectives. Obviously, the hot topic's going to be getting out there and getting, educating for vaping and things like that, to get in front of that and in all the schools. We, we have an intern who'll be working with us. I believe she's from U-Lol, so she's a good addition to the Tewksbury Schools. Some of the things that are going on with the wellness, it's a little early, but to mention, Safe Halloween, there's going to be Milk with a Cop and World Smile Day, along with National School Week, and you can look for all those dates coming up shortly.
Great, thank you very much. We have no policy changes, proposals or updates at this time. I'd like to move over to, I believe, Mrs. Regan for all business professional development update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
You can see that in the all-business portion of your packet, I have supplied you with our opening day agenda from August 26th, in the varying presentations for the entire Tewksbury Public School faculty and staff. Thank you, school committee members who were there, and thank you to our town officials and the police and fire department who assisted us greatly with this morning portion of our day. You can see that after the amazing remarks from our superintendent to the entire audience, the groups, the grade-level groups rotated through three very important sessions, and particularly one that we are very proud of, and again, with our collaboration with our school safety departments, fire and police, as well as our school nurses. Every single faculty and staff member of this school district was trained and reviewed the ALICE protocols and trained in stop the bleed. That's amazing, that an entire school district. You have your certificate right there, Mrs. Stadman, thank you for attending. And the only groups we have in this school department who have not been trained are our lunch monitors at the elementary school, and then our custodians, who are obviously busy back at the schools getting ready for students to come. So we'll be preparing a training for them. The groups then rotated into a training around curriculum, instruction, licensure, instructional technology updates, and those details as they're related to the district and school level goals. And then, of course, a session on special education updates, where they review not only federal and state law, but district policies around special ed and 504 compliance. The day two schedule for our PD program is also on the backside of that. You can see that there's a wide variety of content in curriculum-related PD that was had for all different staff level and, and grade-level bands throughout our school system. So all in all, this is a great start to the school year, and again, thank you for your participation and joining us on that morning, Monday, August 26th.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Moving on to new business, I think Mr. Malone, I could probably handle this first one with the committee.
Okay, you go, Mr. Chairman.
It's a matter of housekeeping, for those that are new to the committee. Every year, we have to update, as Dave referred to, this is one of the 87-plus accounts that need to be opened up and managed, so I know every year, we need to vote on to add an addition of the 2023 student activities accounts and remove the graduating class of, of 2019. So, does anyone have any other questions relative to the document here in front of them? That being said, what's the pleasure of the board? Do we have a motion?
So moved. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Wilson to request the following changes be made to the student activities account, to add the class of 2023 and remove the class of 2019, and also change the name of the garden club to environmental club to be more reflective of the activities that it performs. Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Stadman. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, that's a unanimous vote. And now I will turn the enrollment over to you, Mr. Malone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick update as we approach some key dates on enrollment. Upon opening of school, a comparison to as we ended the school year, and I took a date from around mid to late May, overall, we're down about 90 students across the district. That will likely fluctuate back up, and is very consistent with some of all those studies we did as part of the MSBA enrollment, all these pieces, which would be a stabilization or a slight downward trend. One of the pieces we continually have to in a district our size is keep an eye on some of those grade-level spans where they kind of spike up and you follow it through the entire cycle. So we just kind of finished with a cycle coming out of the high school. There's another cycle in there currently at third and fourth grade that's a little bit high. Once we get into the district-wide schools, it's, we can service that without too much of a problem, but sometimes in the smaller schools, that's where we get the imbalance. Obviously, with the new building project, we'd be able to address those far more readily in the future. But we'll, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that as it goes through. We would expect with the number of registrations that we're seeing and some other things, that, that number of being minus 90 will go up. That magic date is October 1st, which kind of stamps our enrollment for state purposes, and that's the number, although we will fluctuate as the year goes on, that's the number for state reporting that we kind of live with for the, for the remainder of the year.
All right, does anyone have any questions regarding the enrollment?
I just had a quick question. I was looking over this paper this week and was just wondering, it kind of piqued my curiosity to, we have the information K to 8 here. I know it's hard to share information at the high school level, because there are so many different sections of so many different classes. I'm aware of that. Do we have a ballpark to what our kiddos are sitting in when they come into a high school, English, biology? Are we talking lower twenties, mid twenties? You know, what does our average classes look like for your core classes up here at the high school?
Superintendent, do you mind if I answer?
Go right ahead.
It will vary enormously from a class that may run, an elective class with nine, because it's important to students, remember, students choose, to a class of no larger than 29 to 30. Ms. Baker O'Brien is right here, and she's very skilled at that balancing act with students and their schedules. But, you know, some of our classes run very low. I'm very proud to say, none of our class sizes go over that 29. They, they cap them, and Karen, feel free to pitch in if I'm telling any fibs, at the 29, knowing there's going to be some movement at the beginning of the year. So we can give you some class sizes, if you will, some numbers, but knowing that line still moves, there's still some time for kiddos to change, especially in the second semester. But we're long past and away from those. And the, the class sizes that tend to fill up are when we have to offer two AP classes in a particular subject area, and they fill. And then there's that balancing, as kiddos realize, that's that block, but I want that instead, and we see that waterline move. But it's the classes that everybody has to take, like the Algebra I or the Senior English, where we see the, them reach their capacity first.
I was figuring it would be the core curriculum. I was just hearing of some students who are waitlisted at the, the high school level that were interested in classes, so I was curious what our cap was.
And some of those waitlist classes, maybe like the CNA class, for example, which predominantly we fill with seniors, and if there's room, you know, juniors get in, but not always, because we know, we have to reserve those very important college-career-connected types of classes later in the senior year for students that are going into that career field. But I'm happy to get those numbers, and again, we, we have a little bit of wiggle room still to go before those sections open up.
Yeah, I mean, in particular, I didn't necessarily need a big, a lot of information. I just was hearing from members of the community, and I was just having a hard time visualizing, are we capping at 25? Are we capping at 30? Trying to visualize how many students were allowed to take a class.
And I think there's another level of decision-making that goes into, to not just the number of students, but what's the makeup of the students? How many students on 504 plans, IEPs? I know the high school looks at specific data on performance testing and may adjust some class sizes in response to that the following year.
According to.
So there's, there's multiple levels of decisions that may go into establish a class size, but it is going to be predominantly those core courses that are going to have a large number of students needing to take it, that are probably going to have the larger class sizes.
And I think I just, I mean, it's important to note, because the school committee has supported us as we've increased the extracurricular, I'm sorry, the specialist types of classes, the choice classes.
Yes.
It's, it's been a long day, so it's sometimes hard for me to pull these words up. But because we have so many new and increased level of those, other than the core content, the, help me out.
Electives?
Electives, thank you. We have so many more offerings than we've had in the past, and including AP classes, dual enrollment classes, and then edgenuity, we see that kiddos have many, many, many more options. So that's why I say some of those classes are very underpopulated, but we don't want to take away those options for them, because they're very important for a student's particular pathway.
Right, and I completely appreciate that it, it should vary to the capped number according to what you're studying in that class. You know, I am cognizant of that as well. I just wanted to, for my own information, because I spent quite a bit of time looking through this document, and it was just one of those questions that I couldn't come up with the answer for. So I thank you.
And it's harder to drill down at the high school level on that, whereas you can really go to class size and middle school kind of on down. At the high school, it's multi-layered into what goes into that.
And I appreciate that. I, I'm not looking to create any big projects, I was just curious to what it looks like up the end of numbers.
All right, anyone else? Great, thank you, Mr. Malone. And the final order of business under the new business is to hopefully select someone to attend the Joint Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent's Conference in November. I went the last couple of years, it's really a good opportunity to go down and, and be with like-minded people, and they really teach a lot about, you know, what's going on in our schools, and they have wonderful programming there for things, I mean, you name it, school security, social-emotional learning, all kinds of cutting-edge stuff. So at this time, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues to see if anyone has any interest that might like to attend the conference on our behalf.
I'm Nate Shannon Demos, who has expressed an interest.
Great.
Second.
Second, all right. I have a motion and a second. Does anyone else wish to nominate anyone? Great, seeing none. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of, of electing Shannon Demos to be our school committee representative at the conference, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, that's a unanimous vote. Congratulations, Mrs. Demos, and can you please? And can you please get with Gail? She'll make sure she gets you set up and registered and get a room and all that stuff.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, and thank you very much. All right, moving on to school committee matters of interest. I'm going to start with you, Mrs. Demos.
I have none at this time.
Okay, Mr. Cutlass?
I'm all seated, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Stadman?
Oh, no, I just wanted to thank, you know, Detective Gonzalez and the rest of the fine police force and everyone else that was there, and especially our Tewksbury nurses that took part and becoming registered teachers for the Stop the Bleed. You know, being it was my first, you know, kickoff to the school year, being involved in something like that, it was definitely a great, great time, obviously, for myself. And other news, our birthday cleanup Saturday, October 5th. Get out there, go clean up the town and, you know, pick up other people's trash.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, no, just a quick thank you to the school committee for adding me to your committee. I'm looking forward to working with you. And to Mr. Malone for the support from, you know, Gail's been great. We've had a lot of communication and back and forth and getting me into my email and all that stuff. So it's been a smooth transition and I'm just looking forward to getting started.
Great.
Nothing, nothing to bring to the table tonight.
Great, thank you, Mr. Wilson. And welcome back, obviously, to all of our students, most importantly, to our teachers and our staff members. I say it all the time, we have a wonderful community here in Tewksbury. I think we have a great school system. You know, we can always do better. Teachers are really, you know, really, really lucky where they can have such a positive impact or influence on our youth, you know, outside of our parents. Teachers are usually the ones that have the most time to be able to spend and really be able to make a kid's life different. So thank you to all of our teachers and hopefully our students will have a wonderful school year. The Trey Hand, as far as business, the Trey Hand North Street Reuse Committee, we met last night, we had our first meeting to organize. Mr. Jay Kelly, the chairman of the selectmen, was voted to be the chairman of that committee. Bridget Garabedian, a wonderful volunteer throughout the school district, was voted to be the vice chair. Dan Fauck was elected as the clerk and the other members of the committee are Bob Fowler from the planning, Kristen Smith, Ken Duffett and myself. Our next meeting's going to be October 28th. We're actually going to visit the Trey Hand School and the property around it. Just so people are aware, this is not the seven of us deciding what the fate of the schools are going to be. We're going to be soliciting community input. We're going to send some surveys out there. We really want to target the community to see exactly what people feel will be the best usages of these properties when we eventually turn them over for the town. So that was one. And then the other big ticket item, obviously, October 1st is special town meeting. If you're a resident, as you heard, Mr. Malone, today, we have some Warren articles on there, including some expenditures to help make our district a safer place. So please get out on October 1st to attend the special town meeting. And that is all I have at this time. The future school committee meetings and subcommitting dates are as follows. As I said, we'll be attending October 1st, a special town meeting. And our regularly scheduled meeting for October will be October 16th, 2019, right here. Does anyone have any future agenda items that they wish to add to the agenda? If you do, please either contact myself or any one of my colleagues or Superintendent Malone, if you're out there in the public, and we'll be more than happy to add them to the agenda for you. That being said, I think that wraps up the business for this evening. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much and good evening.